Good evening, everyone. I guess we'll call the workshop to order since it's not a meeting for March 19, 2018. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'm moderating the meeting. We'll start off with the invocation.
Oh yeah, that's me. A lot of amendment of silence. Pray as you desire. Thank you.
Stand for the pledge allegiance.
We don't have a flag.
It's in the corner.
Okay, there.
The mayor's got it. Yeah, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The engineer's wearing a striped tie.
Now we'll turn to the city clerk for the roll call.
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protam Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
President.
Councilmember Meyerhopper.
Here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a form.
Thank you very much. We move on to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Mayor, we had two changes to the agenda. The first change is we're going to cancel the closed session. And the second change is we need to add to the agenda a discussion of pay and benefits that will be conducted by Mr. Cowan and our HR Director, Leah Futra.
Move to approve. The agenda is revised. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Move on to first order of business.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Our first item is a presentation by the NC Department of Transportation. This presentation will talk about the significant number of state road construction projects planned underway or anticipated in Greenville. Mr. Concanon is here with a variety of staff from NC DOT. And this is really intended to just provide an update on timing, on projects that are underway, and identify a few decision points that that rest out there. Kevin, did you want to make any intro comments?
No, I think you've covered it, but I'll jump in. There's a slide where Mr. Concanon's going to be talking about sidewalks. And there's two projects that Allen Road and Porter Town Fire Tower, where those roadways go in and out of city limits. And we'll be bringing a presentation to you, a recommendation to you, on what sidewalks we should fund. We can go one of three ways there. We can do just the sidewalks that are in the city limits, and that would leave us with a bit of a patchwork of sidewalks on both sides of the streets. We can do all of the sidewalks. And for Allen Road, that's about $250,000. And for Fire Tower, Porter Town, it's about $275,000. If we just did those in the city limits, Allen Road would be about $140,000, $150,000. So it goes up about $100,000 if we decide to do all the sidewalks. And for Fire Tower, Porter Town, it would be about the same, $150,000, $275,000 if we did all of them. We'll bring a recommendation to you on which of the three approaches. Either we do just what's in the city, do them all, or a hybrid approach of something perhaps we'll take a look at that where we connect the most, we get the most bang for our money.
Michael, what do we have budgeted for that right now? Or weren't we working on that?
We had projected the total cost of all projects to be over $3 million. Capital reserve, we have well over $1 million at this point. And we've got to remember that all these projects come due over a five to six, even seven year period, so we would build up to that over that time.
So it would be, I guess in your professional opinion, if we decided that we wanted to, we could stay within budget if we wanted to go the whole route?
Well, yes, we could build that into the projections.
Okay. Thank you.
So without the turn of other Mr. [inaudible].
Very professional opinion. We can build it into the projections.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mayor Jawal, thank you. Bill Concanon, Division Two Construction Engineer. With me, I've got Preston Hunter, Division Engineer, Jeff Kabinus, Division Planning Engineer. I am going to talk about a number of projects being planned and during, in construction right now. I'm going to talk about current construction, the construction sequencing on Dickinson Avenue, projects underdeveloped within the city, underdeveloped within the proximity of Greenville, resurfacing a little maintenance activity, and we'll talk about some of the agreements First thing is the 10th Street Connector. As you can see, it's approximately a $59 million project, including right-of-way. Right now, we're about 78% complete. The next big move will be at Stantonsburg and Memorial, switching traffic to the new alignment in June. The bridge is pretty much complete, minus some paint and some trim work. Sidewalk and curb and gutter construction will be starting back again this month. One of the obstacles we have in this project is a typical obstacle, is utility construction. We continue to find old utilities that are problematic in trying to figure out what to do with them, and so that kind of impacts the timeline. Next project is Southwest Bypass. It is a $200 million project, approximately, to include the cost of the right-of-way. Project's 53% complete, looking to open in June of 2020. That's a key date to remember. We've got 10 bridges currently under construction. Widening of 13 is going to come this spring, and probably the next big thing will be switching traffic on 11 South to the flyover bridge early summer. Big obstacles here, again, are utilities, but this is pretty much new construction, so we're not really having a project progress impacted near as much as it would be. We've had a lot of questions and concerns on how are we going to do Dickinson Avenue? So there's several ways to do this. We could have the whole entire roadway opened up from, where's my arrow here? From Reed Circle all the way out to Memorial. Is this not working? No, it doesn't really work too good. Okay. But if we do that, the whole corridor would pretty much be a nightmare. So we've kind of got this plan to do it in blocks with, all the blocks will be, will have a small detour route on them, with the exception of number three. This is one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Number three is going to be done with local, with a flagging operation. Things to remember on Dickinson, we will be maintaining access to all businesses and all residences throughout the project. We will be doing some night work. We're going to have night work required on, from Memorial to 14th Street, basically from here to here, and daytime work the rest of the time. That will enable the restaurants and the other businesses on the northeast quadrant, I guess, to continue and operate with a minimal impact. We're going to start construction at Reed Circle, move outward. And in doing this, there are a couple options that the contractor could do, as far as doing one or two of these sections at a time, up to three, but they do have to start out at Reed Circle and move outward from there. This project is about a $16 million project, including right-of-way.
Did you say when you were thinking about starting the project?
This project is going to start after the 10th Street project is over. So we won't, we won't start until 10th Street's totally clear.
Probably 2019.
2019, I believe we're looking at December or January, 2019, December. Somewhere in there. Evans and Old Tar Road, $37 million total cost, widening from Greenville Boulevard to Worthington Road, Cooper Street. Currently, our design is about 25% complete. We're going to right-of-way later this year with construction expected in 2020. The next thing that will have happen, we'll be coming to, we'll have a public officials meeting or a general public meeting sometime later this spring, early summer. This project is a best-fit alignment with bike and pedestrian activities, or facilities, rather.
Quick question. Back to the Dickinson Avenue, construction is starting, I guess you said, in December of 2019? Is that correct?
It can't start before that.
Because of the 10th Street Connector?
Because of the 10th Street Connector.
Is there any intention by DOT just to do some patchwork on Dickinson at all?
I think you mean December of 2018, haven't you?
I think so.
Well, you said 2019.
Can we just confirm the date?
Yeah.
Mr. Concanon.
Okay. I think I made a mistake. The 10th Street Connector is scheduled to be open November of 18. Okay? So Dickinson will not allow Dickinson to start until after that. And really and truly, you don't really want to start a major project like that in December or January because this can be a mess. So we'll probably start it in the spring of 19.
So just, you know, once again, is there any intention to do any patchwork at all on Dickinson? It's in pretty bad shape.
It is in terrible shape.
I understand that, you know, we don't want to throw away money, but it's in really bad shape.
Yes, sir. There are some plans for me to go out and pull some strips.
And there would basically just be some leveling strips, 500 foot long, or, you know, plus or minus, to try to patch it up.
Basically a matted approach.
Sure.
What timeline are we looking at for that to start happening?
Probably next month, sir. We've asked to see you, but you need to talk with your staff, just let them know, say let the business come.
Okay. Thank you.
And one of the things, and I'll get into this in a few minutes, but, you know, this is ongoing maintenance activity. We've had a lot of pavement issues within the city, and I'll touch on some of that here in a few minutes. Allen Road, we, it's a $25 million project. It's going from Greenville Boulevard to Stantonsburg. It's about 65% complete and designed. Its right-of-way is also going to start in 2018. We're looking at construction in 2021. However, there's a possibility we could, we could pull that up and start construction in 2020, depending on the right-of-way acquisition. Our next thing on it would be the local officials and public meeting, March 29. It's important to note on this project, this was one of the, I guess, successful projects, we can say, as far as impacts by shifting the entire project to the west. As far as the widening goes, the department is paying, is going to have to pay for relocation of a 24-inch water line from GUC. However, we're going to avoid any relocations on this project, which is a pretty significant thing, as long as it is. So we aren't going to have to do that, and we are going to put a signal there for the school. It's going to be a full-access intersection. For those of you who are new to the council, that's the slide for that. Those of you who are new, I do have a flyover here of the construction on this road, showing what, where it is now and what it's going to be.
Given those of us who aren't, yeah.
If we could build it this fast, it'd be good, but... And here we are terminating at Stantonsburg. We'll do some slight intersection improvements there. So with that, one thing to point out here, and you can see on your handouts, for those of you who have handouts, the areas that are in red are areas that we have that are within the city limits. The areas that are not in red, we do not have red on them, are areas outside city limits, they're county, and those are the areas that if we went in and put sidewalks only in the city limits, you'd have somewhat of a hodgepodge sidewalk configuration. So moving forward, we have 14th Street project. This project, we had a public meeting on a few months ago, and we had a lot of, a lot of concern. This project is basically going from Red Banks to Fire Tower. It's a $15 million project. We're looking to go to right-of-way later this year. We do have a public officials and local meeting coming up in a few weeks. We have taken this, based on the comments that we got from the public, we did have this with a four-lane divided section. And if you can imagine, on 14th Street, if you've driven on it, it's a relatively narrow corridor. We looked at the traffic numbers, and we had our designers go back and figure how we could better fit this in, and could we possibly go in with a two-lane road with the protected turn lanes in the center lane? So instead of a wide-open center lane, a suicide lane, if you will, we do have protected turn lanes all the way through this. We have 18-foot wide lanes, which are going to allow a nice five-foot bike lane, plus some. And we do have rooms on the berm area, we don't have them shown here, but on these flat areas on the outside of the curb, they are, we are prepared to put sidewalks there upon an agreement with the city. This was a project that by doing this, by compressing this down, it does meet the requirements for traffic. It'll move the traffic just fine. It'll also, we were able to do this with zero relocations, which we had quite a few on the other design.
I assume that this is an expansion.
Yes. We're able to, basically by running the, you'll have your three lanes moving all the time. No one is going to have to stop and wait for somebody in front of them to turn left. And that will, that will pretty much enable the traffic to move. This road doesn't have the traffic that Evans or Fire Tower or these other roads have on it, and it's not expected to. It's not really that same category of a road. So really, we want to, all these projects, we want to go through with the smallest footprint we can, and this will enable us to do that here.
Substantial amount of the traffic on this is actually backing up at Fire Tower. It seems to me, just my experience in it.
I'll show you on the next slide, I'll show you a few sets, a few shots of some of the plans. The Fire Tower intersection is, we're opening it up, and we're making a few other improvements to some of the other intersections along here. So here we are at Fire Tower. You can see, we've got additional left-turn lanes coming off of, off 14th on Fire Tower. And you can see, this is how the median configuration is going to work. You're going to be able to have, everybody is going to get over to make their left turn. It'll be a totally separate lane, so there shouldn't be any blockage. So that's basically Fire Tower to Welcome, or just past Welcome. This is Carry On northbound across Barnes Street. Same basic configuration. You've got your median going through there, basically set up to accommodate any turn lanes. And then you've got Barnes through York and Paramore. And then finally, across Red Banks to White Hollow. With the projects basically stopping at Red Banks, but we are making some improvement on the other side, just to align the traffic.
Was there the addition of a signal?
Pardon me?
Sorry, did I miss it? Was there an addition of a signal?
The signal, we, we're maintaining the signal at Red Banks, and then we are, we've got a signal at York. We've got a signal at Quail Ridge.
That's, that's the new one.
Right.
In terms of capacity, how far are you projecting out when you guys do these studies?
Our design year is 2040.
So you're stopping at White Hollow Drive?
Yeah.
So you're not going to extend all the way down? Because I guess the first, when you first came to us, there was going to be an extension, there was going to, you're going to widen out to...
We were going to try to carry, carry this down to Greenville Boulevard. If you go to, if we carried it to Greenville Boulevard, you would, we would be blocking access to the park. There's a lot of issues right there at that intersection that really need to be taken care of on another project involving Greenville Boulevard as the main project. We would have to carry this around Greenville Boulevard and make some, literally build roads off of Greenville Boulevard, which really is outside the scope of this project.
Resurfacing all the way to Greenville Boulevard? Or are you just going to stop right there at that road?
If they did a little piece...
Wasn't Greenville Boulevard recently resurfaced? When it was, when it was resurfaced, did the resurfacing come around?
Not at all.
Okay. We'll, we'll carry, we'll carry the resurfacing on this road to, to, to the joint at Greenville Boulevard. And we'll, we'll mill up whatever, whatever is bad, and we'll put in all new pavement all the way to Greenville Boulevard. But as far as changing the width of the road and the actual lane configurations at Greenville Boulevard, it's kind of outside the scope of this.
The road I took here, like four feet out of it for you last week.
That was, that was, that was really good.
What about like, will the bike lanes end right there?
The bike lanes will, will, will be able to incorporate bike lanes within our section as far as carrying down to Greenville Boulevard. I'm not, I'm not thinking we're going to be able to do that. The only way we would really be able to carry that down and hit Greenville would be to, like I said, we would have to change several roads, several entrances on Greenville Boulevard, basically build a road back to the park, and that's just not something we can do. All right. Projects that we haven't talked too much about. We've got a new project. It's not totally new, we've been working on it for a little while. Charles Boulevard, carrying from Fire Tower down to Worthington. It is going to be another divided four-lane section, looking to go to right-of-way in 2020 with construction in 2022. We will, we don't really see a lot of, a lot of issues on this, but the shift is pretty much set by the GUC poles that have recently gone out there. We haven't really studied as far as the total impact yet, but we will try to minimize anything we can. We'll go down to the next project. It's the Fifth, Fifth Street project, NC 43 at Memorial. It's a one and a half million dollar project, just for an intersection upgrade. The project is going to start construction later on this year, sometime around November. The right-of-way is currently underway as far as acquisition. All right. This is another project that's of note. This is the Tar River Bridge, and we met on this last week. It's a $10 million project. This is going to be the northbound bridge, right there, as you first get across the Tar River. The design is 20% complete. Will go to right-of-way this year, and 2020 will go to construction after the Southwest Bypass is open. We're not going to begin any work here until the bypass is open. The key thing here, I really wish this pointer was working. The key thing here, for your understanding when we get to it, the reason we're not going to do this until the Southwest Bypass is open, because when we do this, we're going to be removing this bridge. This bridge is going to carry, this is going to turn into a two-lane bridge. We'll have a little shift over here, moving traffic, getting everybody, everybody over on one side, and then back over on the other side as we get across the bridge. So it'll be onsite detour. The, if we detoured the whole thing, it would be, we figured it would be a insurmountable detour. So the best thing we can do is that naturally, we will not be allowing any work on any ECU home games or graduation-type events. We'll try to keep the traffic down, keep it compressed as much as possible, but that's least damaging as far as traffic mobility for the plan. Yes, ma'am?
So this bridge that you're, you said you're going to be taking this down?
Mm-hmm.
Is this the 264 that wraps around?
This is, this is, this is on, this is Memorial. This is Memorial, just immediately north of town.
By the airport.
By the airport.
So you want to take it down?
Taking it down.
You're replacing. You're replacing. Man, I live over there.
We are replacing. We're not, we're not removing. We're replacing.
You're replacing.
We're replacing it. The existing bridge is very old and well past its usable design, so we are, we are replacing it. We've had some significant maintenance issues on some of the adjacent bridges this year, so we're, we are having an active bridge replacement program, so we will be taking it, replacing it. I think we're looking at about an 18-month window, plus or minus, depending on progress.
So Green Street will still be open?
Green Street will still be open.
And the one on the opposite, okay. Because I live that, it's the way I go home, so I'm just checking to make sure that we're still going to have, wow, okay. It's going to be a big project.
We asked them to close them all so you couldn't come to meetings, but they wouldn't do it.
That's why I got a helicopter. Go ahead.
So Mr. Concanon might want to just, one more time, just talk about the method for closing a section at a time, now that we know exactly what bridge it is. You might just want to repeat that one more time.
Okay.
How you're going to close the bridge so they can get the work done.
Okay. What's going to happen after the Southwest Bypass is complete? And people can go that way, Green Street will be open, and we will set up a, we'll set up a detour, traffic works on, to shift the traffic on northbound lanes over to one of the lanes on the southbound lane. And so right now, you've got two lanes going north, two lanes going south. Once we do this, we're going to have a barricade... Once we do this, we're gonna have a barricade in the middle to keep traffic separate. And we'll have one lane going north, one lane going south. As soon as you cross the bridge, we'll have a shift to get you back over so that northbound lanes coming up to the airport and to the next bridge will be in a regular traffic pattern, two lanes going each way.
But how safe is it really gonna be?
I mean, if you're doing construction on the bridge, you know, I'm just thinking, thinking recently what happened in Florida, and to have cars at the same time, like you said, it's extensive construction, right?
It, we'll have enough space, we'll have enough space between the two bridges that we shouldn't have a, we shouldn't have an impact as far as traffic. We'll be able to keep the traffic separate with fixed barriers.
But I'm saying, so you're not doing anything with the foundation of the bridge?
The, the, the entire, the enti, this is, first off, this is two separate bridges. We've got one bridge going here, one bridge going here. They're two separate bridges. We will be taking, what happens is, we'll be taking, once we get traffic shifted, and that is working, we'll start demolishing this bridge. We'll take the bridge deck off, we'll take the caps off, we'll remove the piles that are in the water, and we'll remove literally the entire structure that's out there now on this bridge. Then we'll come in, drive piles on either end, steel piles, H piles, shaped like an H. We'll build the, uh, uh, structure on the ends. We'll set, set up and drive piles in the water or in the middle in some configuration. Put the girders on top, put the deck on top of that, and we can do all that very safely.
So it's not any new?
Nothing here, nothing here, nothing on this is gonna be new. Nothing on this is gonna be new, and we've built bridges like this. I personally was the resident engineer building well over 100 bridges in the three or four counties around here. They're gonna be very similar to this. And strictly something we do every day. Yes, sir?
Yeah, so, I understand the bridge. Just to go back to the Fourteenth Street project very quickly.
Can I ask him one question about this one before he-
Sure.
You, a lot of the traffic that goes across that bridge now is through traffic running along, running along 13.
Right.
Which, at 11, I guess, which you anticipate will be diminished by the bypass once that's in place. So the, so that, we're expecting a substantial traffic reduction on that piece of road? Once the-
Along those lines, are you done? So along those lines, I'm assuming, and if you're not doing this, I guess I recommend it, if you guys could, north up Memorial, where the access is available to the bypass, would you, are you guys gonna put up some sort of marquee saying something to the effect of "Construction is ahead"?
We'll have this whole thing signed, we'll have, we'll have the whole, we'll have the whole thing signed.
Essentially encouraging everyone to take the bypass.
We'll be encouraging the bypass, we'll, you know, we'll put this out in the newspaper, we'll have it on television, I think so.
But there'd be, there at the bypass itself, there'd be some sort of signage encouraging people to take the bypass so as to eliminate some of the traffic here for those that would not normally take it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, kind of a two-pronged question. Is there gonna be any sort of pedestrian or bike element to this bridge? Bike lane, sidewalk, or anything like that?
That's a question that has been asked. There is not currently bike lanes on any of these bridges, nor are there any sidewalks along this entire area.
I take 13 all the time for work, and there's always a pedestrian on that bridge.
There, there, there's pedestrians on the bridge. There, but there, you know, the, the, there's no, there's no pedestrian facilities beside the bridges or adjacent to the bridges on the entire corridor. So, um, that's something we can look at as far as the pavement markings, what we can do. I don't, I don't know that we have any currently planned.
Thank you. That's good.
Thank you. You can go back now.
I'll jump back a few slides, to the, back to the Fourteenth Street project. Did you say, so as it's currently planned for development, it covers capacity for the next 40 years or to year 2040?
2040 is our design year.
Okay, so that gives us, once it's complete, 20 years' worth of, of capacity, is that right?
Right.
So, you know, by this design here, we have roughly 80 feet that we're utilizing of, of width, and each car lane is taking up roughly 12 feet, right? So, within the next 20 years, if there needs to be expansion within that time period, would we expand just based off the current footprint?
The idea here is to expand only what we need to expand. We could go right now and, and expand to, uh, two full lanes in each direction and the median, and by doing that, we would probably take, I would say, a dozen houses. We'd probably prefer to not do that. If you look at the lines-
So does that, does that still require a five-foot bike lane on each side and a sidewalk on each side and a 10-foot buffer?
The sidewalk, first off, the sidewalk takes no, sidewalk takes no space. Let me go back to the slide here. Okay, so on a typical section, this area right here behind the curb, this 10-foot area, is, I'll call it a berm, and the berm is pretty much where utilities are gonna go. So we're gonna have that regardless, and it just so happens to be where we're gonna put sidewalks. So, do we need this to put sidewalks? No. We're, do we need this to put the utilities and drainage structures and everything? Yes, so we're pretty much gonna get this regardless of if we have a sidewalk or not. So the sidewalk's not gonna take any space. In this configuration here, you're seeing basically an 18-foot lane. The 18-foot lane is to allow, first off, you've got one lane, a very wide lane for cars, and you've got a nice bike lane, minimum of five foot. And we're planning on putting rumble stripes for the pavement to give bicyclists a little bit of protection. But one of the things you'll notice here is, if you, um, take that additional lane, you can take that out to 22 feet or so, and you take five more feet for a bike lane, you're looking at going out to pretty much close to 100 feet, at least. 100, 105 feet. So if we think that we can do this effectively, and, and we, we measured intersection performance and roadway performance on an A-through-F scale, F being a weight of, say, 80 seconds or, 80 seconds or greater. And then you've got different stages of F. You've got Fs that are like three and a half minutes. But with this plan, all the intersections perform all the way to the 2040 design year with the growth that we're expecting during that time to a level of Service D, which, level of Service D is very acceptable. So we really feel like this will accomplish what we need to accomplish. Could we take it, could we widen it out and it cover traffic forever? For 40 more years or however long? Yes, we could, but is that necessary? I don't believe it is, and I don't believe the, uh, it's really, really hard to look a citizen in the eye and tell him, "You're taking this on the idea that you might need it someday, but you don't need it today." So I wanna tell him, we have a design year. All the projects we're developing in Greenville, all the widening projects are on a 2040 design year. And that's as far as we, as engineers, can safely predict and feel comfortable with doing. Yes, sir?
Um, I have one more question about the, the new bridge, the bridge replacement. The southbound lane, and once again, this is just for information, so I'm not trying to drive any, any design, but the southbound lane, it looks like, has a really wide shoulder that presumably is, you know, what, you know, you can see cars parked on it.
It is.
Is that the same sort, same as basic design that's gonna go on the northbound lane? Are you gonna stay with the same narrow, narrower design that's currently there?
I couldn't tell you that right now. I don't, I don't have the design plans for not to that point. I just wanted to bring it up right now because we are, we are moving pretty quick on the design on this one.
I must tell you, I just have a sense of anxiety. But I think that's just based on the current events.
I understand, I understand. We take, we take bridge construction very, very seriously. We may, you know, this is a project that we're gonna be working closely with the very qualified structural engineers. When we go to build it, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have our best inspectors on this, or better inspectors on this. This is not anything we're gonna take lightly. This is the same basic construction process that's going on on the Southwest Bypass.
Okay, well, when you look at the 10th Street connector, that's built. But when I ask about opening it, what I continue to hear is, they don't want anybody to drive on it because they need it to settle.
It does.
And so, when I think about this bridge, and we're gonna take one half, and we're gonna section it off, and we're gonna be able to drive on it, and we're not letting it settle, especially if we're gonna-
When we drive, when- The 10th Street connector, the soils, the soils in that area are very poor. So when you remove the road, the existing road, and you get down into the muck, it's very poor, it's got a lot of clays, a lot of organic materials, and they take a long time to settle. So by putting the burden of the slopes out there, you're weighing it down, and we were, we have a designed settlement period. With this, we're gonna drive piles. The piles are gonna hold this up, and we're gonna drive the piles to a point of refusal. We're gonna hit the hardest layer we can hit, and we'll have enough friction on the piles that this should be really, very, very stable. And we're, we do these, I'm a lot more comfortable actually with this than I am something like 10th Street. But the 10th Street project, we've studied that for a long time, and that is just a matter of the soil settlement and a designed settlement period. Okay, the next slide is Fire Tower, Porter Town. And this is a $40 million project. Widening on Fire Tower and Porter Town from 33 to 43 with the current roundabout that's at Porter Town going to a four-lane roundabout, and then another roundabout at, at Eastern Pines. One of the things, this is, this is a project we've talked quite a bit about. We're continuing to make some modifications. I think one of the things we're, we're, we've done, we've made a shift in the road of 10 feet or so along the vicinity of St. Timothy's. We're, we're making shifts continuously. We're adding some guard rail, we're looking to build some barrier walls to try to maintain some berms. And so, again, this is a project we're looking to move to right-of-way later this year with construction in 2020. If you look at the, at this project, the lines, they're in yellow. Those are city limits. The lines in black are outside of city limits, so that's an area that you need to look at as far as sidewalk configuration. What's the best fit, what, how much impact do you wanna have? And, you know, you've got a large area right here with no outside, excuse me, that is outside of city limits. So that's something you need to study. We're looking to the Turnberry Extension. We're gonna try to accelerate the right-of-way and construction on it. I've got right-of-way starting here, 2018. That possibly is gonna get drug out a little bit longer on parts of this. We're gonna probably break this into two pieces for a right-of-way acquisition and try to work on the pieces that we know are pretty much down in stone. We're gonna accelerate those. And like I said, on Turnberry Extension, we're, we're looking to accelerate the right-of-way as well as construction ahead of the regular project.
When you do the Turnberry Extension, you're probably not gonna change out the signals right until the whole project's done, is that right?
We're not gonna change out the signals. Well, nothing's gonna happen to the signals, I wouldn't imagine, until everything is done. We're just gonna open it up so people can use it, and the businesses can go ahead and get squared away in there.
Might be a good idea for us as a city to start advertising that so people get used to it. Because the project's gonna take, what, maybe two years?
That'd be, the overall project is gonna take probably three and a half years. That section of it should take probably 18 months, plus or minus. All right, the, um, next slide is the resurfacing plan for asphalt roadwork. The key routes that we're doing, NC 33 or 10th Street, we've got a 264 eastbound in 2020, parts of Memorial, parts of Charles, and quite a few secondary roads. If you look at the, um, lines down here, you've got your blue lines, 2018, yellow lines with 19, and red lines are in 2020. The overall projects, we're looking at spending about $9 million in the next three years. And this does not include the work we're talking about on Dickinson. That's strictly a maintenance issue.
I'm trying to determine, is one of the yellow lines kind of in the center of that picture there, is that Evans Street from Greenville Boulevard?
Yes.
Is that, so that's planned in 2019?
Yes.
Okay, and that's gonna go all the way down to, is it 10th Street? From Greenville Boulevard to 10th Street, is that where it's going to, or?
It looks like it's going-
Fire Tower, then?
Well, this is, this is the other section, because the one from Fire Tower is gonna go from Greenville Boulevard all the way down to Worthington.
To Redbanks?
But this is the other direction, towards downtown.
2020. All my stuff is like 15 years from now, what is that about?
Brian, these are all the ways you put in city companies. Is that why this is happening?
Mm-hmm. On Evans, right. We only maintain, we only maintain that road from Evans from up to 10th Street. Down to 10th Street is city.
Okay, so it'll go from Greenville Boulevard to 10th Street in 2019? Good. We get a lot of complaints on that road.
A lot of complaints.
Yeah.
We resurfaced that road, I think-
From Evans Street, Evans Street go-
To Greenville Boulevard.
To Greenville Boulevard, yeah.
On 10th.
Not on 10th.
On Evans.
Evans Street from 10th Street to Greenville Boulevard.
So the one that says 264-
Yeah, from 10th, Evans.
Where does that, where does that start?
Huge.
It says eastbound, but where, where exactly does that start to go towards eastbound, 264?
About 10, you're talking 10th Street?
No, I'm looking at 264.
Okay. Isn't that down towards Washington?
Where, where does it start?
About Sheepsburg.
That's, that's completed, that's Greenville Boulevard from 10th to Memorial. Do you, right here, this one?
Mm-hmm.
I think you're talking about the red one, aren't you? You're talking about the red one?
It's a part of Bojangles Speedway.
Okay.
Right over that intersection is, it's actual one.
Over there, near North Campus Crossing there.
Right, right.
So it's going to start there and then go, okay. Okay.
It's already done. Is it done?
No, it's more than that.
So it says 264 through 10.
264 through 10.
264 goes kind of all the way through, and it's, it's confusing if you're not familiar with it. So that's why I was wondering where, what we start for this to be eastbound. Okay.
All right.
The bridge I go to?
Okay.
Scared of driving the bridge, isn't it?
The next slide I want to hit is, everybody's favorite topic is potholes. We've, this is Pitt County, and I think the probably two-thirds of the pothole repairs have been within the city. We did 2,200 pothole repairs in February.
How many?
2,200 in February. Now, I will say this, this is a continuous battle, and the job in Pitt County is not getting any easier. And just as a matter, a matter of scope, in 2004 through 2006, I was the county maintenance engineer in Pitt County. I had, on any given day, I had 75 employees and 25 inmates. So I had 100 people working, and an appropriate amount of, related amount of equipment. Right now, the county maintenance engineer has probably got 30, 32 people and no inmates. So whereas I had 10 crews, and I could get a lot done, the guy out there now has got four crews, and if two people are sick, he's, he's got a problem. So that's why, you know, to get 2,200 potholes fixed in a month with that kind of workforce is, it's challenging, keeping in mind everything else I have to do throughout the county. So, again, what we, we're going to need to, some decisions made from the city regarding Fire Tower, Porter Town, sidewalks, sidewalks on Allen Road. We also need, going back to the Turnberry extension, for us to build this and for this to work, this has to pretty much be a city street, and we need an agreement for the city to take ownership of the street so we can build it to city standards, which is going to allow a smaller footprint than if we build it to our standards. So that's a significant issue that for us to make this thing feasible and move forward, that's one of the things we're going to need. And again, the sidewalk agreements that Kevin talked about.
And so which, which parts would have to be taken on by the city?
The Turnberry extension, the quadrant, that, that road, that road, it will be a brand-new road.
Right.
And if the developer went and built it, it would turn into a city street. We need to, we need to build it, and it just needs to be a city street, basically based on the design standards.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood the limits of what-
Right. Just basically Arlington to Fire Tower.
Just to jump in real quick on that one.
Just one of these.
Allow utilities underneath the road by DOT that, that berm or that width on the side of the road, the utilities being on the side of the road, and that would impact businesses in that area. So we're allowing a larger footprint for businesses in that area, but also utilities going under there.
And we have lots of streets like that.
Our street, all the issues.
You said the utilities be on the street.
On that road, on Turnberry, we are planning on having sidewalks on both sides as part of the project, based on an agreement.
So I guess could, I want to ask the city staff if they have any hesitation with us doing that?
I don't. We can talk about what the, what the, we'll provide to you what the cost of-
That's what I was about to ask.
Yeah.
Can we just get a breakdown, street by street? This street, this much, this street, that much, the sort of line item it was?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I'd also be curious to know, on those same projects, where we are potentially covering places that are county managed and not, not city managed or city-owned?
Certainly on the sidewalk portion, what we, our plan was to say, just the city, the full scale of the road, and then somewhere in between what that would look like. And then we can also provide with you the maintenance cost of doing that as well.
And we've already communicated with the county about every single one of these, and the county has said essentially no.
The two roads, Fire Tower, Porter Town, as well as Allen Road, they understand the road widening and the quander that the city's in related to sidewalks.
But when you say they understand, that just means they understand that's it? Hmm, okay. Interesting.
How soon do you need kind of an answer for some of these?
The Allen Road project is the farthest one along. We're at 65% right now, and we're going to have these plans wrapped up in several months, final plans. So in doing the final plans, we're going to come up with our final quantities to make, do the final cost construction estimate. So I think Allen Road is number one, Fire Tower, Porter Town shortly thereafter.
So like, as far as the timeframe, you'd probably need the next 30 to 60 days?
If we can have, if we can have Allen Road within the next 60 days, and Fire Tower, Porter Town after that, that would be fine.
Do you think it would be, and feasible for staff to maybe send out like a memo, like a notes to council on the prices of those things, and then maybe that could give us some time, and then maybe we could add it to one of the agendas either in April or May?
And the approval of these, again, I think this was mentioned earlier, but it's not an immediate cost to the city. It's something that's projected out over a number of years. Okay. Anything else?
So that is all I have, unless anybody has any questions for myself, Mr. Hunter or Mr. Caddis.
You got a question? He's got a question.
The 10th Street area from Evans to Greenville Boulevard, that, that's a separate, in a separate planning phase? Will it be on your radar?
10th Street from Evans to Greenville Boulevard.
As far as just resurfacing it is, currently GUC has some plans for replacing utilities. And that's, once they get their utilities done, we plan on resurfacing.
Okay. Do you guys have any idea when GUC is doing that? And you're basically waiting for GUC, but you don't know when GUC-
What we don't want is paid and then they give them back half cut.
Sure, yeah, totally understand that. So at this point, you would be waiting on an answer from GUC on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's a rough area. Really rough area. Thank you.
I do want to say thank you. I appreciate all the construction that's taken place here. We're extremely thankful in the city of Greenville to have all the construction that's taken place. And I can tell you, you know, being on the council last time to see Memorial Drive and Greenville Boulevard being two main of our, main arteries being repaved, that was, that was amazing. I know that we always have the negative backlash from all the potholes and whatnot, but I know it's a long process. There's a lot of roads that are taking place, and we're really thankful for everything you guys are doing, and do a good job communicating. And, you know, it's great to hear you talk about some of these other projects, trying to limit the impacts to some of the neighborhoods. And we appreciate everything you do. I know there's a lot of time and effort that's, that's put in that we don't see and the public doesn't see too, that you sit down and you talk to homeowners associations, other property owners and businesses throughout the community to limit the impact. So I appreciate everything you guys do.
That's right. I was just going to say, I didn't get to this, but we do have, I added everything up, and we're sitting really close to a $450 million total commitment to the city of Greenville and surrounding area, surrounding, in Pitt County.
Wow, man, that's, that's amazing.
We literally don't know what we'd do without you. How many other cities in Greenville, in North Carolina have- By tractors. That, that amount of work?
Well, if you, if you look at Raleigh or Charlotte, Wilmington, some, you know, for, for the town, for a city this size, we have a pretty substantial load. I don't know of another city this size that has this much of a magnitude of work.
Please, I just want to answer.
Anyway, that's all I have, unless anybody has anything else.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Other employ, post-employment benefits, which is called OPEB. This is our update to city council. The local government commission has recommended that we update our boards on this governmental accounting standards change. What is OPEB? It's actually retiree health insurance, which I'm soon going to become one of those. The city of Greenville provides healthcare benefits to eligible retirees. That includes medical and Medicare supplement post age 65. And this is consistent with most municipalities in North Carolina and throughout the country. Who is eligible? After 2011, city benefits were actually reduced, so city and GUC employees, oh, sorry, was that supposed to be clicking here? Sorry. Okay. City and GUC employees changed the level of healthcare benefits, and there is now a new scale of service, which would be from 20 to 24, 50% contribution by the employee. And if they're 60 to 64 years of age, 35% contribution. 25-plus years of service, 25% employee contribution, and 5% employee contribution if they're 60 to 64. The, these are some definitions of OPEB, so that you will know what other post-employment benefits represent in the financial statements that will be presented to you June 30th. Further definitions, the future value of OPEB costs determined by an actuarial valuation. You've heard about this, this study that we have, and we're going to continue to have this study every year because we have to include that on our financial statements. And our net liability at June 30th, 2017 was 51 million. The OPEB statement, Gatsby 75 replaces Gatsby 45, which in Gatsby 45, that was when all over the country, we had to start recognizing what that liability was. And this new statement, which is Gatsby 75, will take place this June 30th. And not only do we have to recognize the liability in the notes, now we have to actually put that on the balance sheet as a liability, on the statement of net position. The effects on the city of Greenville with Gatsby 75, in 2017, under the Gatsby 45 rules, which is governmental accounting standards board, we showed 23 million of the liability. Of that unrecorded was 28 million, and this June 30th, with the adjustments that we have to make between now and June 30th, it'll be around, if we had shown it last year, it would have been 51 million, a $51 million liability. This is, these are our peer cities, and so, and we also included GUC in what they'll show on their fiscal year 2018 net position statement. And this is what the recorded liabilities were for June 30th, 2017. So as you see, the city of Greenville, we're sort of not the best in the world when you look at the peer cities that you have suggested, but we're not the worst in the world either. We will have a $3.9 million deficit with the unupdated unrestricted net position. Steps that the city has taken, I think we've done a great job of establishing a trust. This was established in 2009 with a $100,000 contribution by the city. We increased that contribution by $50,000 per year. I mean, keep in mind that a lot of cities have done nothing to date. With our value as of June 30th, we have $4 million in equity, and that's now $4.8 million. So imagine, we invested $3.2 million in by increasing $50,000 per year since 2009, and we now have $4.8 million. So we gained $1.6 million in interest earnings since 2009 by being in the state pool. If we had not made that decision to do that during these low-interest rate periods, we would probably have 0.05% interest, which would be a few thousand dollars as opposed to $1.6 million. Our calendar year change in value year-to-date has been an increase of $287,000, and now the city contributes $500,000 per year. Additional action was that we reduced coverage. We have higher contributions, and we provide more wellness incentives to employees. Our future plans, you'll see in the 2019, 2020 budget, we're increasing the funding by $100,000 per year going forward. And we want to do this and recommend that you do this until the city reaches a contribution level of $1 million per year, and use that increase in contributions to offset the trust market value. We, and we will also have an annual actuarial study, and we believe that we could open an additional equity account for the law enforcement separation allowance money. But these equity accounts that the state holds in a trust for us actually earn a lot more interest because they're not restricted to the level that we are for interest earnings. And somewhere around five to 10 years from now, you'll see this start to reverse because our liability will start to come down because of the changes that we made to the plan. We have a younger workforce, and the fact that we are contributing $1 million a year. Any questions?
So proud we made that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Let me make a few comments here. Just to, to kind of revisit the fact, to the council, we do self-insure our health insurance. So these are claims-based expenses on an annual basis. But even with that being said, if you look at the retirement rules and the threshold for health insurance that we are, that we previously had and the changes that we made, it is saying that we have like a 50-some million dollar liability in the future, over the long term. So what we've done is, the council made this very financially prudent decision many years ago to start contributing to this OPEB funding account so that we could minimize that liability. And that's what Bernita's saying, by contributing to that, there's going to be a point in time where those, those acts cross, and we'll see that the money that we have in reserve, plus what we're funding on a self-insured basis, will actually help see that liability start to come down. And these are based off all these actuarial studies and the changes that occurred to the, the health insurance plan back in 2011, plus the changes in the coverage that we have per the plan. So this is something, that's why Bernita said, in order to recognize this in the financial statements, we have to have actuarial studies almost on every single year basis to be able to update that liability.
We're required to have a study every two years, but we're recommending that we do that every year, so we keep an eye on the liability. And hopefully that reverse, I think we're conservatively projecting five to 10 years, but hopefully that reverse will happen a lot sooner, hopefully.
Also, we got to look at this in the, in the full confines of the health insurance plan. This is just the retiree piece of this. We also have to monitor every single year our plan design, the employer-employee contribution to the plans, and that's how we do that in conjunction with GUC. That's usually done in the, in the fall time of the, of the year. But, and we've also, as a council and GUC combined, have a three-year plan to move to an 80%, 80% cost share. Now, just a few years ago, I think when I first started, we were like at 86, 87%, and we're down to what, like 83%, 82, 83% right now. So we're well on the way of meeting that 80% cost share in the next year. But this is something we're going to have to, I mean, the council and GUC are going to have to continually monitor this with the increased costs of health insurance and the, the design of the plans, and looking at the contribution of the employee and the employer. It's something that can't be done just at one time, and you- It's something that can't be done just at one time and you forget about. This is something that has to be evaluated every single year and updated to where both we are and GUC is in our history, basically.
Are retirees able to utilize the employee health plan?
Yes, that's right. We made that change.
August 1st.
August 1st.
Have we seen any like change, or do we expect to see some kind of a change as far as, will that help out?
We owe this to the council to give, given the fact that I think May is our one-year anniversary. I think what we need to do is probably add that to the next workshop, just to give you an update on the numbers that we're seeing through there. I'd like to say that it's been a very successful first year, and one of the reasons why, as we get into the budget process, you're going to see that our healthcare costs have not increased to the level that they had anticipated over the last year. Now, I'm not saying that's all of the issue, but given the health clinic, in addition to the health incentives that Bernita spoke of, we are being very proactive. And that's not even considering the fact that we're contributing to an OPEB plan, which many municipalities have not done, except for the very largest, like you said, the charlottes of the world. They're okay. But when you look at our size municipality, I think we're in a good place right now. But that does require to continue to adjust, like Bernita said, over the next couple of years, what we're contributing to the OPEB plan, so that in the next 10 years or so, we do see that crossover where the liability starts to reduce.
And so, the plan is that we're going to continue to add $100,000 of funding each year until we reach a million, is that right?
Yes.
And then, once you hit a million dollars, what's the plan is to keep it?
That comes in the fund, it's going to end up building up fast enough to cover the cost of the liability.
Okay. So, as it stands right now, when we have a retiree that retires prior to social security age, the city will still cover 83, whatever that number is, percent of their healthcare costs?
Exactly.
Until their Medicare age?
That's right.
That's correct.
It's essentially the same coverage as our active in 40s up until they reach 65.
But remember, that percentage is improving as well.
Right.
So, we're helping to bring that down over time.
I'm helping to bring that down.
I was wondering why we're expecting to see $3 million, right, extra for retirement? Is that because of you?
1.6 billion.
Let me just say, you know, it's something that we've got to continue to work at and strive to educate our staff, because when you look at our plan as compared to like a state health plan, so, it is a very lucrative plan. Overall, our health insurance is very lucrative, 85%, 80%, you can't beat that. But at the same time, the employees have seen over the last few years that their cost share continues to increase. So, it's that fine line that we got to bridge to make sure that, to try to explain to our employees the robust plan that they do have, to have them understand that, you know, there's going to have to be some continued cost sharing in that.
Do we have, are there years of service requirements in place for current employees to be able to access that, what we're moving towards in 80/20, from the time they retire to their social security age?
No. That's one of the flaws, but it's employees who at least have 20 years of service.
Are you referring to what was revised in 2011?
Yeah.
For different services?
Yeah.
We factor in age and longer service.
And the reason I hesitate on saying that is that we maybe not have something in years of service, but our plan designs do provide a benefit that employees that are younger, that are healthier, can invest in the health savings account and put money aside into their own sort of quote-unquote "bank account" and help minimize their health insurance premiums that they pay on a monthly basis, but also build up a nest egg for any future claims they may have. So, we do offer a plan that allows individuals to take advantage of leading a healthier, younger lifestyle.
But in order for an employee to get access to the retiree health plan, they have to work at least 20 years with the city in order. So, and that was a change that was made in 2011. And that really does begin to limit the cost associated with the retiree health insurance.
Because essentially, it's vesting, right? At what point do you vest in the retirement health care? In 2010, it was five years or something, and now it's 20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next item is a discussion of the Job Creation Grant. Christian Lockeney with Economic Development will provide this presentation. I do, I'm going to borrow off of Christian's slide, back when we came to the council and talked at the planning retreat, and last week, when you all approved your council priorities, we talked about at that point, the idea of the Job Creation Grant. We provided this presentation to you in some of the Economic Development Committee meetings as well. And so, Christian's going to bring sort of our most recent thinking about it. He's going to share a little bit to you about what state law requires, and then we'll kind of go from there. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Christian.
Good evening, the mayor, city council. This is a Job Creation Grant. Couple of months ago, at the city council planning retreat, you guys set your goals and priorities for the next year, and this emerged as one of the top priorities. This grant would really give us another tool in our toolbox to be able to attract industry businesses here and also help in the event that a business needed money for an expansion. Okay, program overview, just in general terms, the purpose of this is to encourage a creation or expansion of new or existing businesses within the city of Greenville. What we've looked at as far as an award amount is between $500 to $1,000 per new full-time job. We would have a cap amount on the total grant. That is a requirement that North Carolina makes us have. You'll see that on the next slide, a legal provision. Eligible companies, the way we have it set up right now, eligible companies would have to pay at least 50% of health insurance for their employees in order to receive the grant. The full-time jobs must be maintained for two years. And so, the way this program works is it's a two-year period. You can't just create the jobs in year one and not maintain them for year two. And the reason that it's a two-year period is because we would be actually dispersing the checks in two increments, two annual payments. Okay? It applies to job growth in the ETJ as well as the city limits. The mayor actually gave us that idea. That would allow us to come online and incent industrial businesses up in the green. So, that would, that gives us a tool where we previously didn't have one to be able to go out and do that. There will be a two-year grant period. Payments will be based on the actual jobs that are created and retained, and funding will be determined on budget availability. We do have a scenario for you that we'll discuss with you. Okay, now, I'm no lawyer by any means, but we can't talk about incentives in North Carolina without talking about the legal requirements. So, North Carolina has somewhat of a restrictive environment. In order to be able to give incentives in North Carolina, it has to meet a public benefit, meaning that we're creating jobs, we're growing the tax base, we're diversifying the economy. It has to meet an initial but-for test, meaning that the business would need the incentive for the location to go through. And so, in other words, you have to have, the incentive has to help facilitate your move or expansion. In North Carolina, we would need a written guideline or policy to be able to have this on our books and implement it on a regular basis. And we would also establish cap amounts. That's something that we would have to do legally, maximum funding per business. This is a little bit different. You haven't seen this before, but expenditures take the form of reimbursements, not unrestricted cash payments. So, in North Carolina, we just can't give cash grants with no strings attached. There has to be something involved where we can be able to legally make it work. And so, building reuse grants, I work with those with the state. Those are actually based on job creation, but those guys have to be doing some construction to a space to make that work. And so, what they do is, with those building reuse grants, we turn in construction receipts. The company is reimbursed. That's an option for this grant as well. Maybe if they're not doing construction, maybe we can have them save receipts for their operating expenses, but there has to be a form of reimbursement. And so, we'll work through that with Emmanuel on the legal side to figure out what that could be. Final approval for all economic development incentives in North Carolina. If you're going to spend money for economic development, you have to hold a public hearing. You guys will see that. Any grant that comes up, we'll have to do a public hearing for that, even building reuse, small businessman competition, et cetera. And also, a written agreement governs the implementation. Think about a development agreement between the city and the private party that received the incentive. That's pretty standard. Who is eligible? So, for-profit businesses creating at least five new full-time jobs and willing to maintain the jobs for two consecutive years. Companies who are locating in the city limits or the ETJ, and also businesses who are legally qualified for the incentive, meeting the but-for provision. Who is not eligible? We said in some recent sessions, we looked at it and thought that restaurants and retail businesses, we would not want to incentivize those businesses through this process. Next steps. So, what we would do, we would get your feedback this evening. We would develop a policy and guidelines for city council approval. We would develop marketing material for the grant, and we would work with our area partners to get the word out. We would also, we would, you know, at that point, after the word's out, we would receive a letter from a prospective business who was creating newer full-time jobs. They would just detail in the letter in basic terms what they were doing, what the expansion looks like, key dates, target dates as far as your construction, their hiring dates, et cetera. Staff will determine if the business meets the eligibility requirements, even the legal threshold, and also, if they're good to go and you guys want to, you can approve the incentive for them. Now, here is a scenario, a few scenarios. Let's take some recent companies, or maybe hypothetical companies as well, and just see how this grant would work. So, let's look at Acme Manufacturing, locating up in the industrial area, creating 300 brand-new full-time jobs. We incent them at $1,000 per job, and obviously, the maximum, if we put a cap on it, the cap would be $10,000. Okay? So, you know, for a business that's going to be creating a lot of jobs outside of the city limits of the ETJ, that's 10 grand. All right? Let's look at ABC Flood Cleanup. This is a disaster relief company who's creating 15 new full-time jobs. It may sound familiar to you guys. How would this work? $1,000 a pop, they would be eligible for $10,000 based on a $10,000 cap.
That'd be $5,000 in year one and $5,000 in year two?
Well, so, the way we would do it is, is at the end of year one, they would have to submit what's called an NCUI 101 Tax and Quarterly Wage Report, and it's a state form that details their employment numbers. We would count the number of full-time workers they had created up to that point, and we would issue them a check for that total amount. The next year, it would be the remaining number of jobs that we would pay them for. If they create all the jobs in year one, they still have to play ball with us in year two, because we have to know that they maintain those jobs for the second year. So, what we would do is just get them to submit their quarterly tax and wage report, verify it, and then close the grant out.
And you have a baseline that you take beforehand?
Yes, we do. So, as part of the submission process, we would have to see their most recent NCUI Quarterly Tax and Wage Report to be able to understand the number of full-time jobs that they have been going into the process.
So, you know, in example two and three, right, you have ABC Flood Cleanup, 15 employees, $10,000, great, and number three, $5,000 for 5 new time employees. But when you go back to example number one, so is this cap, we are able to set this cap, or this is the cap?
The city and the council can set the cap about how much money they would want to out, what the cap is, and how much annually they would want to put aside for this grant.
The state requires a cap.
Right.
So, but that, we're giving you a hypothetical.
Sure.
Recognizing that if we do have an employer that comes in with about 300 jobs, there are also, in all probability, the probability be a series of other state incentives or potentially local incentives that may be layered on. But again, the council would set the cap per employer, as well as the total amount of cap, total amount of funds available, because we would do it as part of the annual budgeting process.
Could we also do some sort of a cap based off of payroll? I mean, instead of...
Certainly, that's fine if you wanted to do a cap based off.
Well, I just...
But with the state law saying we've got to have a cap?
I just, you know, kind of like example one, I mean, 10 grand, that pays for maybe a third of one employee, of 300 employees. So, I'm looking at it like, I don't know if that would really entice somebody to come and do business here for $10,000. I mean, to me, that's kind of like a very small portion. I guess that's my concern, like, what's the purpose of giving $10,000 of incentives?
Right. But again, in the case of Acme Manufacturing, they are, in all probability, if they were to come in, there would be a series of other state, as well as county sort of incentives that were added into that equation. But that cap is certainly up to the par.
I would look at a different cap, especially for larger businesses like that. So, you know, to me, that's not going to say anything, set us apart from anybody else. $10,000 is just like, okay.
And what we do know from doing this work is that there are some communities that have sort of a capital investment kind of grant. They have some that are capital investment tied in with the job creation. I think we can only find one example, is that right, Christian? Of another community who solely had a job creation grant, probably because in many cases, you have to show, you have to offset an expense, and so, it's the easiest way to do that is to do it with a capital investment grant, which is what we currently have.
That's right. Let's talk about cap amounts real quick, though. Let's kind of go through this. So, if you think about these three businesses, right, these are three businesses that within the last year or so, I mean, potentially could be awarded. If you add their total amounts up, that's 25 grand. So, it gives you some wiggle room to be able to work with as far as how you award it. I mean, there's a variety of things that we could do. We could simply base the, how we do this grant based on the funding availability for that year. Let's just say this year, we budget 50 grand for it, okay? And so, you can play around with the caps to make it, you know, worth doing. And so, in reality, you could look at this on a case-by-case basis, as each business comes in, knowing what your funding level is, knowing how much money you guys have in the bank, and understanding if you want to, you know, go ahead and give a business like this a lot of money, or you want to hold some for another business that may be coming in.
So, could we set the cap on an annual budget and just say that we're going to put $100,000 towards it, and that could be the annual cap? You know, if one business comes in and all of a sudden they bring in 300 jobs for a community, maybe they're eligible for the entire amount, based off if they qualify or the job creation.
What we could do is we could set the, we could give you a range, if you wanted to, a range of 1,000 to 5,000 or something per job. We could give you a range, and you could set an annual, an amount as part of the annual budget process.
Could we also have, I'm sorry. Could we also have some sort of criteria, such as a minimum number of jobs produced?
Well, this right now has five.
Yeah.
So, you have to produce at least five jobs in order to get it.
So, could we increase that?
We could even set thresholds. Christian and I had even batted around with this idea. You could say, if you're creating between five and 20 jobs, you can get, your cap is this amount, but if you're creating more than that, then your cap could be this.
Well, I certainly think we should incentivize companies to create more jobs, and so, they should be more financially incentivized. So, you know, if we create, you know, zero to five jobs or zero to 10, maybe it should be $500 per employee. And, you know, then go to 1,000, 1,500, and up, or whatever was in the budget.
Or like a sliding, just a sliding scale?
Yeah.
Because we're talking about somebody coming in and bringing 300 jobs, they're probably making a $50 million capital investment in our community.
Big one.
$10,000, maybe more to us than it is to them. They might just, might be like, it just shows up on their balance sheet, like, hey, $10,000 bucks.
It certainly, when you look, when Christian, you could flip back to the one where it says Acme Manufacturing. That's not a law. However, the one thing I will say, it is certainly a signal to the company that we are, we are so interested in job creation that we're doing what other communities in North Carolina are not doing, and we're going to give you money for job creation, number one. one. But if you want that number to be more, our limit will be the number that we put in the annual budget.
Right. And I think that's fine.
That will be our limit.
And I think, you know, when you said that there's one other municipality that's offering this, I mean, to me, that's a competitive advantage for us. You know, it doesn't have to be a tremendous amount of money where, you know, nearly bankrupts the city to get a business here. I mean, we're fortunate that we're going to have state incentives that are going to be probably kicked in as well where they have a lot more money and hopefully we'll get good representation up there in Raleigh. We'll see.
I will.
And they'll continue those incentives. But, you know, I just wanted to make it somewhat, so it's, you know, when you have that meeting, you have a discussion with a company that potentially might be coming here to locate here or somebody that's looking to expand, like we saw Grady White just expand, that it's going to be a significant amount that they're going to say, well, that's pretty neat, you know, I'll take advantage of that incentive over going to a different municipality.
So when I hear the council, is that the end of the presentation? So what I hear the council saying is somewhere in the $100,000 ballpark?
Well, I mean, I just threw that number out there. I don't have anyone else.
I would also...
I mean, you know, just figured, I'm just saying like, size-wise, as opposed to $10,000, you know, for a large company. And I think it needs to be a sliding scale like Councilmember Listfield said too.
Or maybe whatever.
Or Councilmember Myhrhoffer.
What was the... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
One concern that I have just, that's developed through the conversation here is, let's just say it is 100,000. I want to be careful that we don't give it all to the one big company so that it then hinders our ability to foster the creation or development of AAA software. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, just...
But it's, but isn't it going to be, you said it's going to be one of those things where it comes before the council, right, for us to approve it? So, you know, if somebody comes to us and they say they've got 250 jobs that are coming to our community, we could go ahead and say, well, we're not going to give everything.
Do we create two separate pots, if you will? One for bigger companies, one for smaller companies?
Well, one pot on a first-come, first-served basis, those who are able to create those jobs until the funds run out for that budget year. And then, of course, for the next one, we can always increase.
And could it be one of those things that if no, we don't use it that year, where we...
It rolls over.
Rolls over?
Yeah.
Is that permissible by state law?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you...
So, I think that one of the issues here is I think that staff is building this kind of on the same general scale as that we've been, that we've authorized them to operate over the past three or four years. And maybe we're envisioning something larger than that. What has been the economic development, you know, budget for this sort of thing over the last couple of years?
Well, so this is a brand-new grant, so obviously taking into account this will be new funds budgeted. But, I mean, typically, you know, if you look at our small business plan competition, there's usually $60,000 total per year that's budgeted for that. Capital investment grant, I don't believe that there's any funds budgeted for the capital investment grant. I think we dip into the general fund to fund those. We've had one recipient of that, that was the boundary.
I think that maybe what we're seeing here is, you know, they built this, they built this grant program on roughly the same scale as the office has been funded at over the last couple of years, right? If they've been getting 50, 60, 70,000 dollars a year, they're not going to come to us and say, we want to spend 250 grand. So that might seem a little ambitious from them. So if we in fact do think that 100 or 150 or 200 grand, you know, if you guys are, if the council is looking to move on this in a big way, then I think that's the signal they need to get, that it's, that we like the idea, we want it to be bigger as opposed to, because I think they're trying to operate somewhere near their current scale.
I mean, I think it needs to be bigger. I really do. I think it needs to be incentive, it needs to be something where we set ourselves apart from a different municipality. If it's an opportunity for us to sell our community, I think it's a great opportunity. It brings jobs, I mean, that's number one objective during the council plane session was economic development.
Yeah, I definitely agree with a more, a larger commitment.
Good choice.
And I want to make sure that we're just, you know, we're protecting the idea that we have these, we have a university here, a community college here, we have a millennial campus here soon, that we're also protecting the ability to foster new business, new growth. Because what new, what person, I mean, with all the young minds here, I mean, what new creative, innovative ideas going to come out that we want to be able to foster, protect and develop their ability to create that new small business?
Councilmember Spoh.
They could grow into a big business.
Because I do, and just to build on that, I think that the multiple is so much better on, and then ultimately your return is so much better on, probably on some of the smaller stuff, that the cost of bringing in, you know, since a large company is obviously going to be highly desirable by a whole lot of places and can go a whole lot of places, the cost of bringing them to this, to this, you know, is, you know, to some extent is not going to have a, the return on that is going to be, it'll, there'll be a return, but it's not going to be, you know, six, eight, 12, 20 times. Whereas, you know, finding some, you know, two-person small business that wants to expand to a five-person small business and, you know, we feed that, then that's a company that five years from now, eight years from now, could be as 50-person, 100-person, I mean, just the, I think your return is going to be potentially much greater and there will be some losses on the smaller stuff than on trying to grab, ring in somebody who really can bring in 100 or 200 jobs. That's a larger...
I think, you know, I liked what Councilmember Smith said too. I mean, first comes first served. I think it incentivizes people to move and put into action right away and invest in our community. I think that's a great idea, you know? We've got a certain amount of money and if it's spent, you know, before somebody else comes in there, I mean, that's great. We've had a few people that have already made the commitment to bring in a business to our area. Somebody on that phone?
Mayor Pertham was on the phone.
Yeah. I thought her say something.
Okay.
She would got to put on mute when she was talking to somebody?
Hmm?
You there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you have something to say?
I was thinking, is this, you're also working with the county, what does that contribution to it?
This, Mayor Pertham, this is Ann, this would be separate from the county. The county would have their regular set of incentives. I don't believe that the county has a job incentive grant. They do some capital investment grants and they do some training grants, but this would be separate from the county.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Now, on that note, the county, if we did have an industrial manufacturing business that the county has an industrial incentive, it's done with a case-by-case basis, so they would be coming in to incent that. The other two types of businesses are smaller businesses that would probably locate in the city, I don't think they would incent those.
Sure.
So what I hear, what I hear the council saying is more money, a higher cap, and potentially this concept of the more jobs, the more money. We'll work on that. And then I hear what Councilmember Smith said about sort of first come, first served. Now, that's enough direction, I think, that we can take this and massage it and bring it back.
Two words, more ambitious.
More ambitious. Got it.
Question.
Just one word.
This GUC, how can they fall into this?
Over.
Because if we have a large company for, say, that may want to come here, that's always one of the things that they look for and GUC could be a huge benefit to them and they are a part of the city. So we might want to talk to them, especially about a larger company. We know about the smaller ones that are around here and the college students that may go out with the bright minds, but with those that we are trying to attract, we don't want to leave that hanging fruit to the side. We want to give that as an option as well.
Well, certainly we can have a conversation with GUC regarding this particular grant. Again, just like a large corporation that would come in who would receive state grants, there probably would be assistance from GUC as it relates to other work within the GUC utility rates, line extensions, because that's within the purview of GUC.
They have riders, economic development riders, and they use as an incentive. What that means and how they do it, I'm not sure.
Ask them.
So.
Anything that we can get to help us.
What was our, or what is going to be our explanation for excluding restaurant tours and retailers? That question's going to get asked.
It will, it will. I think, for lack of a better term, where they're a dime a dozen, we're not having any trouble getting them to locate in our city. And the incentive typically, it has to meet the but-for, the legal threshold. So it has to be a business that's actually entertaining other cities or looking to maybe shop their expansion in other cities. So it would be, one, I think it would be tough to get restaurants and retail businesses legally approved, but I think, two, just the overall value that it brings to the economy. We were trying to be, steel the bears, we're more ambitious with the grant.
Yeah, I definitely understand. I just worry about telling, you know, a struggling small business owner that, you know, you don't qualify for this, you know? And responding with, we got a dime a dozen.
Well, we did, the 50% health insurance coverage is in there too, right?
Right.
So that will eliminate a lot of retail.
Sure.
With that.
Plus, if they're a struggling business, they're probably not going to increase their workforce, I would think. Or business looking to expand, if we can phrase it that way.
But just, just to give you a ballpark, I think that, I think the number I hear is that in Pitt County, we increased jobs, it added, let's say, 3,000 jobs over five years. That's 3 million, if every job, every job was eligible for this, that's $3 million. And so the idea is to make sure that we have, we've created an incentive that the council is willing to fund.
Mm-hmm. Michael.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, just remember that we're going to be reviewing a budget draft in April. And that draft is going to have various different economic development initiatives that before you, you know, pass judgment on that this may be the city council's most important thing or how much, or even come up with a perception of how much money you want to fund it. Let's look at it maybe, I mean, this is, it's many ways of teasing because you've got to see the full plethora of palette of options that we're going to have going to the budget. You might say, hey, we need more money in this area or based off some of the areas that we have, we might need more money in the other.
Also, I think that, do we, this might be a discussion some other time, but do we have any money allocated in the economic development budget now for something along with the lines of this that could be used for this right now?
Um...
I mean, don't we have any, any kind of, I mean, we get, occasionally we get funds that come out of the economic development budget for like studies and whatnot like that. Is there any money?
I'm not aware of any funds right now. I mean, if the council really wanted to start it and they told us, go find it, we'll work hard to find the money in the budget. But there's no line item at this point that is, is sitting there that we could tap into for these funds. We would have to not do a project or unactivate.
And we are in the, again, as far as looking at foreshadowing down the road, looking at redirecting dollars in the next year's budget to different initiatives for economic development.
And, right. There is some, there is some money to really, to really be, to really lay out some work and achieve the work that the council's identified and those priorities, but that is going to take money to do.
In terms of a tease, Michael, would that include like the industrial side shell buildings, things like that?
That's right.
Very exciting.
Would it be possible to, I guess, maybe, to get maybe a listing of some of the incentives that the state is currently offering?
Yeah.
You know, it might be job-based as well, just so we have something to look at so we're not just throwing money at the same thing that the state's going to be throwing at. We want to use our ability to fund things like this in the most appropriate manner and we don't want to be throwing the same type of incentive that the states are already going to be throwing at, you know, a large amount of money when we may be able to put it for a different measure.
So we'll provide you with those incentives at the state level as well as those incentives on the county level as well.
Note to council?
Mm-hmm. We'll do it in the council.
How about...
I'd like to say something about that. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. My concern is that a lot of businesses that we have now are worrying about the high utilities. So unless we can get Tony to come to some type of agreement, which you guys have already set up, then I don't think that we are going to be able to draw any businesses, you know, big businesses, look at the things that we've lost to like Wilton and, you know, the Rocky Mountains. So they have a salary plant there and, but our problem is with us has always been, and I don't know how we can change it. Somehow or another, it's GUC. They have the high utility almost in the pool. So that's why we're not getting these companies to come. Another problem too is railroads for companies, you know, being able to have the carpool right up and load and then go. But my concern is how are we going to deal with this as far as GUC is concerned because they've always been a problem? So how do we eradicate that problem and have them look come on your line with us? It's...
Ann? Well, the GUC budget presentation that the council will hear in April, April, May, will show the, will show rate comparisons for all four of the utilities that are provided for GUC and you can look at how competitive GUC is related to those rates.
I got an idea too. I thought about this.
Well, what I mean is, what is the corporate rate? Because they have to have a higher corporate rate than they do for, you know, just normal customers. So maybe the corporate rate that they have designed, that is a problem. So we don't know that until Tony shows us what he has.
Well, I can certainly share that. Mayor Pertham, I'm happy to talk to Mr. Cannon about that.
On that note too, one of the things I would request when we get that presentation from them, I would really like to see when they give us the rates of different municipalities, I would like to see 1 through 15 as far as the largest cities in the state, through the 15th largest city in the state, because, you know, in actuality, that's kind of who we're competing against. And a lot of times we get a list and we'll get like 20 to 30 different municipalities. Some are big, some are really small, you know? And to me, as a competitive measure, we need to see where we are against 1 through 15. If we're number 10 right now, so I'd like to see what number 1 through 9 are doing as far as utility rates are concerned. Because a lot of times we see that and we see we're in the middle, but, you know, Vapple's on that list and some other communities on there. And I think in actuality, we're competing against the top 10 in the state, I should say, top 9.
Awesome. Well, then we'll take this back. I think we have some direction, we'll massage it and bring it back.
Okay.
And one more thing I think could be helpful, we're spending roughly $60,000 a year on the business, small business plan competition. Can, how many years have we been doing that?
Since 2008.
Okay. Can we get a report of, you know, who we funded and where they are today?
We can do that.
I might have that at home for you.
Okay.
I have to have it every other week.
We can do that. Awesome. Thank you.
I'll just provide a brief overview in, excuse me, in preparation for your meetings that will be in March and April. And then Michael will come up and kind of talk about it from a budget perspective. As you all know, annually, the city and GUC review the competitive pay posture of the joint pay plan with the objective being to maintain an effective pay system that's both internally equitable and competitive to the external marketplace. We take a deliberate approach in this regard. We try to look at various sources. The sources being published salary surveys, public sector benchmarks, but I believe most of you are familiar with, as well as we poll local private employers to see what they're With regard to the published surveys, these generally are the six surveys that we review and consider. You can see that for the upcoming fiscal year, there's not a lot of variation between the published surveys. The biggest probably difference that you see is with regard to CAI, Capital Associated Industries. And that's the index that traditionally the city and GUC have used. So theirs is a little bit less, 2.5% compared to generally a 3% projected wage increase.
I've actually used a couple of these surveys before.
Are we, is this a projected wage increase from a national level or is this from our locality?
Yeah. And that's a good question. For, with CAI, they only include North Carolina employers. The other surveys may be regional or national. So we've looked at, when we've looked at some of the larger surveys, we've looked at World at Work since they are one of the largest and most well-respected surveys and they publish... surveys. And they publish both on a national level, as well as working out regionally. So, they're, we studied their southern region. And for the last several years, the southern region and the national region for World at Work has been right dead on. So, there's not, there's very little variation between them. Okay. You'll see at the bottom in red on the next few slides, there is a bullet point denoting that we've used CAI, as I've indicated, as a primary benchmark. But last year, the committee and the boards, you all did something a little bit differently. Instead of going with CAI, using CAI as the, as your benchmark, you decided to go with the public sector projection at that time, which was 3.2, a little bit higher than what CAI was projecting, because they were projecting 2.7. So, we'll talk about that in just a second, as to, as to why we did that. I also mentioned that we utilize public sector benchmark organizations, which include 26 municipalities and utilities. And for fiscal, this current fiscal year, 1718, the actual average pay increase is 2.9%, based on the 24, 24 of the 26 respondents. For the upcoming fiscal year, 1819, the projected pay increase is 2.9%. So, the same.
And just, and to point out that last, and what Leah just said, is that they, that the public sector had, last year had a projection for this year, 3.2, and it actually ended up being 2.9%.
Correct. That's correct. So, slight difference. And so, the projection for the upcoming fiscal year, again, for those public sector benchmark organizations is 2.9%. With regard to our local private employers, we polled 14 local, 14 businesses or organizations, and their projected pay increase is slightly, a little higher, at 3.2%. That's based on 13 of, excuse me, 13 of those 14 organizations that we polled, and they had a projection that they shared with us. Any questions so far on those? Okay. So, doing a three-year comparison to the market, and I'll just kind of focus on fiscal year 1718, which is our current year. You'll recall that the CIA, these are, let me just point out, the, these first three columns right here, these are actual numbers, not projections for 1718, because we went back and kind of heated up to, to be able to compare actual numbers. So, for this current fiscal year, CIA came in at 2.7%, which aligned with their projection. The public sector, you recall, projected 3.2%, but the actual was 2.9. The private sector, ca, ca, excuse me, is at 2.9%. But the city and the G, and GUC, instead of going with CIA, as we have traditionally done, we aligned with the public sector projection of 3.2%, which is why it was a little bit higher.
But in '15 and '16, we undershot the CIA.
That's right. That's right. And so, part of the rationale for going with the public, for you all deciding to go with the public sector projection, was so that we could try to diminish the lag behind the market. And so, that did help, as you can see. So, we're only 1.2% behind the market compared to, you know, when you're comparing CIA. 1.4% behind the public sector, and just slightly under 1% compared to the private sector. Okay? And so, for 1819, the upcoming fiscal year, again, these numbers here are projections. So, CIA is a little bit more conservative. And again, that's made up strictly of North Carolina employers. So, they're projecting 2.5%. The public sector organizations that we polled came in at 2.9, the private sector at 3.2.
So, if you look at the proposed budget as it currently stands in the work that our staff has formed to date, we have a proposed budget with a 2.5% salary increase for employees at this point in time. That as compared to the CIA, CIA of 2.5, which is the traditional primary benchmark, 2.9 for the public sector, and 3.2 for the private sector. And just from a standpoint of what does that mean in the scope of the budget, if you look at, for every 1% increase in salaries and benefits, it's about a $400,000 impact to the budget. So, you're looking at 1.5, 200,000, 1.0, 400, up to 800,000 for an additional 2%. That's just to put it in context of what that means to the overall budget.
Is that both years of my annual budget?
That's just one year.
I know, but I mean, are you...
I would have to add it both years. It would be, it would be a compounding impact. So, 1.5 would be 200,000 in the first year, and a total of 400,000.
Your recommendation is 2.5%?
Yes, 2.5% each year, exactly.
Okay, that was my question. Both years of the...
That's right, exactly.
And tonight, we were not anticipating a, a decision from the council. We were simply sharing with you what will be presented to the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee meeting, which meets tomorrow, as well as previewing what you will hear when you do the other Joint Pay and Benefits meeting at the end of April.
Which, you know, and I think the purpose of this was, every, every year we've gone over to GUC, we've had no background whatsoever, and we get there, and we have the discussion. And the GUC Commission has been talking about this, and they were all briefed on what the plan is. And the city always comes over there. We have no idea what the plan is. We haven't discussed it. We've gotten the notes, but that was all we've talked about. It's, I guess this is more or less just a dialogue, so we can kind of discuss, you know, what direction we're looking at, and listening to what the city has planned for our budget right now.
Quick question in regard to the wage increase as a whole. So, just out of a, say, hypothetical 2.5%, is it 2.5% across the board? Is there some merit pay in that 2.5% built in?
Yes. Last year, we had a...
2% across the board.
2% across the board and a 1.2% merit.
Okay.
Which the highest, based off that merit, that an employee that performed at the top of the scale could get was 2.4%. In addition to the, the market 2%. The lowest that they could get is zero.
Gotcha. Okay.
And it, and the scale went anywhere in between, between the lowest performing employee to the highest performing.
But the total dollar amount was 2.5%?
We made it work out so that all the dollars job, yes.
Okay.
Well, typically, I think this will also cut down on some of the time, because when we go to GUC, they always have to say, when y'all gonna meet again? Because we never can make a decision then.
They're coming here this time.
But I'm saying, we, we don't have to have that extra, extra meeting, because if we're looking at it on the front end like they do, it can be, at that one meeting, we can make that decision. I'm sure they'll be happy.
In, in staff's opinion, does it make sense to increase the percentage going towards merit pay and decrease the amount going towards base, to, to a base, to incentivize people to be more productive, to work harder, to be more engaged?
This was the first year that we had merit in a very, very long time.
Right. 60809.
Right. And so, this was a, this was a year for us to get, make, ensure that our systems are in place, that we're effectively using those merit funds. We could certainly evaluate whether or not, whether or not, what, if we did a 2.5% increase, what portion, what, let us come back to you, what portion would should be for market, and what should be for merit. You know, the, the advantage of merit is, is it does give you some ability to reward the higher performers. But it's, but it isn't, it also isn't significant amount for employees to really, to really see that difference. But we can come back to you with a recommendation on that.
Before you finish too, do we, we also have another, I think, workshop right before the next, before we have the GUC. I thought we were seeing that on the schedule, that we have one more workshop?
We do. We have an April the 9th workshop as well.
Would, would that be something that maybe you could give us a recommendation at that time? Of course, we're not gonna make any vote, but at least we'll know what your, your recommendation is.
Market and merit?
Yeah.
We're certainly happy to do that.
Okay.
Councilmember Smiley? Just, you know, and I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, we didn't have a merit, we didn't have any ability to do a merit pay system three, four, or five years ago. And there has been a, it's about that long that we have been building a merit system, right? So, we have, first, there was a lot of studying of it. Then there was a, you know, we ran it through as a dry run, and had, and we did the evaluations, but it had no impact on merit. And then we ran it through again, and it came back, and we only had a little impact. We've been, we've spent the last several years trying to gear up to having, you know, more of our raises be based on merit. And I would encourage, I'm certainly hoping that we will continue that process. We don't have to go all the way, but I do think that, you know, this has been, we identified, you know, three, four, or five years ago, maybe more, that the lack of a merit system was causing real problems for us in terms of compression and competitiveness. And, and so, you know, it's been a very deliberate process to create a merit system where one did not exist, and a, and performance evaluation system that was modern and able to, the employees were all deeply involved in that process. And so, the groundwork's been done. So, to your point, I think that we should, I hope that we will continue to step along that road.
Good?
That's it.
All right.
For the council this evening.
All right. So, motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Questions made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayes have it.